Great, Vivian, can you walk us through the rules of meeting management, please? Vivian, where'd you go? There you are.
Yeah, I'm here. Let me pull it up and Devin will pull up the slides. Great, so thank you Chair. Thank you. I see we have at least one member from the public joining us today. Thank you so much for taking the time to attend the meeting. My name is Vivian and my role here is to help facilitate the public engagement parts of these meetings. And these rules, I'll share an hour in place to help us achieve a balance between transparency with community members and security that minimizes disruptions. So after I read these out, we'll start with open comment from community members and then there is one public hearing item on the agenda tonight. First, we want our participants to know that the city is striving into a vision co-created by city staff and community for productive, meaningful, and inclusive civic conversations. And that we worked with the community to develop these expectations for meetings. Give me one second, I'm just promoting Lisa Smith. And other staff. Sorry about that. This vision is really designed to make sure that we are able to promote free conversation and dialogue while also recognizing we want to make sure everyone who is participating feels safe and welcome. We want to ensure we make space for these different viewpoints in our meetings because we do believe it leads to more informed decision-making. We have a lot of information on the city website about the productive atmospheres vision and I'm going to narrow in on a few things we need to know for this meeting tonight. We have a number of rules of decorum that are in the Boulder Revised Code and we have some general guidelines that are advisory in nature to share with all of our participants this evening. We ask that all remarks and testimony raised tonight be related to city business. We will not allow any participant to make threats or use any other forms of intimidation against any person in this session. Obscenities, racial epithets, and other speech and behavior that disrupts the meeting or otherwise makes it difficult for us to continue is prohibited. And we do also ask that participants identify themselves by their first and last name. Next slide. So we're in the Zoom webinar format and this allows our participants from the public to speak at designated times. But we will not be turning on video for community members because of security concerns in this platform. There's no pre-existing list for signing up to participate today. So if you're in the meeting, we welcome you at appropriate times to raise your hand and we'll let you know when that is. And on your screen, you'll see a couple of different ways to raise the virtual hand. First, at the very bottom of the screen, you'll see a horizontal menu with three clickable items. And if you click on the hand icon, it'll raise a hand next to your name and it will know to call on you. And if you have an expanded menu, you can also get to the raise hand icon by clicking on reactions. I don't see anybody participating by phone, but I will monitor that for those instructions if needed later. So before maybe closing, just to stress that the open comment section coming up next is meant to address issues not on the agenda tonight. And also the Q and A function that we have here. You can contact us through that if you have any prob- like any logistical problems with the platform or any process questions, but is not meant for discussions about the content of items on the agenda. Those should be brought up during the public hearing. Thank you. Over to you Chair.
Okay, thank you very much Vivian. All right, if you've raised your hand for public participation, we can get started with that. Vivian, do we have any hands up?
Yeah, we do. We have Becky Davies. So please go ahead Becky, you have three minutes for this open comment and Devin will just pull up the timer. You would have to mute yourself from your end Becky. Please go ahead.
Okay. Okay, great. Thank you. Hi Planning Board, my name is Becky Davies and I'm a member of TAB, the Transportation Board. And I'm here tonight to say hello and introduce myself and also give you a heads up. And I'll be reaching out to each of you individually via email to let you know about an initiative that TAB members and some other board members are supporting to ask the 2024 City Council, so the council that will be elected in November, plus council members that are continuing on, to ask them to add an item to the 2024 work plan to update the city's off-street parking ordinances. Now, this is something that significantly affects transportation and has has been a problem for achieving some of our transportation goals. But we are aware that it affects many areas of the city's work. And certainly, planning and development is a big one. So you're probably more familiar with these ordinances than most boards. So we wanted to bring this item to you to consider. We would love for you to endorse this request to council that they add this item to the work plan in 2024. And I want to emphasize that this is not a request for, we're not asking that all of Planning Board collectively vote. Rather, this would be as individuals, you can say, yes, I support this request to council in the same way that individual board members are allowed to endorse candidates for council, for instance. So it's not a formal city item, so it wouldn't have any kind of formal vote. I just want to make that very clear. So I will follow up with you via email to give you more specifics on exactly the text of the request we want to send to City Council on this topic. And would love to have your support and demonstrate that, you know, this is an issue that affects many areas of the city and something that's just due for an update in our code. Thank you so much for your consideration and feel free to ask me any questions you might have via email.
Thank you so much Becky. No other hands are raised for now, Sarah.
All right, thank you. All right, we're going to go on to approval of the minutes. Has everyone looked at any revisions in August 1st, 2023 Planning Board draft minutes? Everyone okay? We have to vote on it. So Kurt?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
And Sarah is a yes. All right, thank you. The Planning Board minutes from August 8th. Anybody have concerns with what we were sent? All right, Kurt?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
Sarah, just real quickly, one of those two, I was not present. And so maybe I should not have voted on approval of those minutes. And I, without having them in front of me. Anyway, I, just as a formality, whichever one where I was not present, if Devin is here.
All right, thank you. And George was also not, you were not present August 1st and neither was George. And just hold on. Sorry, I just closed my own document.
Lisa was not present on August 8th.
All right, so.
I was thinking one of them. I was like, I shouldn't be voting on one of these, but I wasn't sure which.
All right, so Devin, if you will remove Lisa, what Laura, what Laura, you're back on, what do we need to do?
Oh, I just wanted to make sure that we accounted for those who are not absent abstaining. So it sounds like we're on the right path.
Yes. Please mark me as abstaining even if I said yes, if I wasn't actually there. Thank you.
Same for me. Thank you.
All right, item four, discussion of dispositions, planning board call-ups and continuations. We have a call-up item, final plat to subdivide the property at 2415 Vine Place to create two lots. Lot one is 22,390 square feet and lot two is 23,913 square feet. Flat top subdivision case number P E C 2022-00062. This application is subject to potential call-up on or before September 27th, 2003. The preliminary plat was approved through case number L U R 20022-00050. Does anyone want to call up this item? Seeing no up, Mark?
I don't want to call it up. But I do have a comment. And I thought this was also a time to ask any questions or comments about a call-up. Is that correct? Okay. I just want to say that I I asked some questions about this earlier this year when we went through an annexation of this lot. And I went and visited the site. I ended up asking the same, the same questions of Shannon who had taken it over. Anyway, I, what I was really curious about is we have two cul-de-sacs that up but each other going east-west. And here we have this big beautiful lot. It's going to be subdivided into two big homes. That's all fine. I'm all for subdividing really large lots. What is concerning me, and I just want to make this as a comment, is that when you have these cul-de-sacs, this, this particular item represents land use patterns that are just awful for pedestrians and cyclists. And, and I, I don't ever want to see this coming up in the future. And maybe we should have really, I should have called it up earlier this year under the annexation. But if someone, if a school kid was to walk from their home on Vine, Vine Court, not Vinka Vine, to Crestview, it would take 21 minutes if they were to walk from the adjacent address on Vinka some 10 feet away. If they were taking, if there were pedestrian access to connect the two cul-de-sacs, it would take 10 minutes less, so half the time. And that kind of 10 minutes each way, 20 minutes a day, twice as long distance-wise, is an item that creates more car traffic. Parents are more likely to drive their kids to school and create the never-ending queue of, of parents dropping off their kids. So I just want us all to be aware of the land use pattern that we've created and we're not going to solve it with this particular item. That's why I'm not calling it up. But as we evaluate sites in the future, the sorts of connections that allow children to walk to school are really critical. And this is an example of a really dumb and failed land use pattern that is problematic for for everyone involved. So that's my comment.
Okay, thank you very much, Mark. All right, we will not be calling up this item. Now we can move on to the public hearing agenda.
Sarah, I'm sorry, I just had one question on this also. I'm not interested in calling it up. But I had a discussion with staff regarding zoning for affordable housing and there was some change to the minimum lot exposure to a street. I just wanted to confirm, is this a case where they cannot divide into more than two lots because of that 30-foot minimum frontage on the street?
Charles, I think that's a question for you.
Yeah, thanks for the question Kurt. Yeah, it would be. The 30-foot frontage is really designed not just for access, but also the spacing that we need for residential utilities to be installed.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay, any more questions? All right, we're going to move on to the public hearing item. And just before I start reading what I'm supposed to read, we've set aside a total of 90 minutes for this, 30 minutes for staff presentation and Q and A. And the way we thought we would do this was that we could ask questions during the presentation so that we get some give and take rather than wait until the end of the presentation. So that'll be 30 minutes and then 60 minutes if we need it for board discussion and then the vote. Okay. Agenda title for 5A, Public Hearing and Recommendation to City Council Regarding Proposed Ordinance 8601, Amending Chapter 9-13 Inclusionary Housing, Section 9-2-14, Site Review and Section 9-16-1 General Definitions BRC 1981, Modifying Affordable Housing Requirements and Incentives and Setting Fourth Related Details. Sloan will be presenting and Jay will be on deck. And please take it away Sloan.
Okay. We pull up the presentation.
And also Sloan, I'm sorry, I sent you a question which would be helpful for you to answer just before your presentation. Throughout the doc, throughout the material, you reference affordable housing. Are you, does that mean permanently affordable housing or are you talking about market rate housing? Or could you at least make sure when you present to us, you differentiate between the two?
Right, so in the context of this presentation and the IH program, affordable housing refers to permanently affordable housing because all units produced through IH would have a deed restriction in perpetuity.
Great, thank you so much.
Sure. Okay, well, good evening everyone and we're excited to be here tonight. As you said, I'm Sloan Walberts and I'm also joined by Jay Sagna and Michelle Allen will also be helping me to present tonight. And so the purpose of this item tonight is that we're requesting that Planning Board make a recommendation to City Council on the proposed co-changes within ordinance 8601. This program update has been in progress for about a year and we're now entering the sort of implementation stage. This is an update of existing program that's been in effect for about two decades. And the IH program is reevaluated and updated periodically. The last update was in 2018. So just to sort of refresh everyone's memory, City Council identified two priorities related to middle-income housing for the 2223 Work Program. The first was to consider updates to the IH program focusing on increasing middle-income homeowner, homeownership units. And the second was to launch the Middle Income Down Payment Assistance Pilot. And Planning Board provided feedback on the majority of the changes included in the ordinance earlier this month. However, at the meeting on September 7th, City Council directed staff to remove the proposed incentives for middle-income homeownership units from the scope of the project. So based on that direction, a modification to the community benefit requirements is also proposed to remove that penalty for not providing units on-site. So just the major topics of this update are to update the cash-in-loue methodology amounts and structure to align with the feasibility analysis and the just basically nationwide best practices. And then adjustments to the code and regulations to clarify IH requirements, sort of simplify some code language and reduce redundancies. Also, staff plans to pursue a NEXUS study, hopefully next year, to establish that residential linkage fee to apply to demolitions and rebuilds of homes or significant additions, but that is not part of this ordinance tonight. Just wanted to make that clear that we did get the go-ahead, but it won't be part of this ordinance. So as I said, we're in the implementation stage of the project and updating the code language to achieve the outcomes I just described. The ordinance is scheduled for first reading before City Council on October 19th and second reading is on November 2nd. And if passed, the changes would become effective 90 days after adoption, so late January of next year. And this would allow staff to implement the procedural changes and administrative regulations. IH is unique in that a set of administrative regulations are approved by the city manager as a companion to the land use code. And those regulations get into the nitty-gritty, so to speak, and set forth the procedures for administration and implementation. So in terms of community engagement, the project's been following the city's community engagement framework. The engagement and information sharing for the project was described in detail in the memo. And we're at those steps six and seven at the evaluation and decision-making stage of the project. So also as a reminder, the city hired Kaiser Marston Associates to support the program update. KMA evaluated the feasibility of the current IH program and explored sort of nationwide inclusionary housing best practices. They also did an assessment of financial feasibility for a range of development types and tested some alternative requirements. They also reviewed best practices and policy approaches used elsewhere. So based on their analysis, we know that there will be continued difficulty in achieving onsite for-sale outcomes. And that a modification of that cash-in-loue structure and methodology is necessary to just align the program with best practices. I also just wanted to put this in here to sort of point out that the IH update is running parallel with the city's other efforts to address the housing crisis. And IH program is really only one way to address housing needs and no single program can solve the affordable housing crisis. And, you know, as the board knows, middle, the missing middle is a housing type. And really can continue to be addressed through the zoning for housing project, even though those incentives we talked about were removed from the scope of this project. So the takeaway for the ordinance under consideration tonight is that, you know, a well-structured IH program should not act to constrain production of any one desired housing type. So for an example, they propose square footage methodology would remove the disincentives we currently have for smaller, more affordable market rate units. And at this point, I'm going to hand it over to Michelle to sort of go through each change individually. And Michelle, just let me know when you want me to move forward.
Sure, will do. Good evening. Good to see you all again. Michelle Allen, I'm the house, a housing planner with Housing and Human Services. So I'm going to go through the, the proposed changes. You've seen these before, so but do feel free to ask questions as I go through them if you would like. The, the biggest change probably for the program would be changing our methodology for determining and implementing cash-in-loue to a more of a per-square-foot structure, a more pure per-square-foot structure. We will adopt a feasible range amount that the intent is to keep the cash-in-loue revenues approximately the same as they have been in the last year. And then it will also include some maintenance of the program over time, including doing a feasibility analysis at least every five years. This is, the square foot approach is considered the best practice. It's widely used. It scales better with unit size than what we have right now, which is quite clunky. It results in a more fair burden across different sized units. And it avoids an incentive for larger market rate units, or as Sloan said, a disincentive for small units, however you want to look at that. But what we do right now is, does have some unintended consequences built into it. The, this item is about adjusting the rents that would be required of any onsite affordable rentals that are put onsite because of inclusionary housing. As you know, affordable or rental projects generally do pay cash-in-loue, but occasionally we do have projects that put those affordable rentals on-site. And right now, 80% of the required units would be, the rents would be set to be affordable to 60% of AMI. And 20% of those units to fit to 80% of AMI. We're proposing to take that second tier, that 20% smaller tier of 50% AMI. I mean, of 80% AMI and move it down to 50. So then we would have some at 60 and some at 50. It's consistent with Lytech funding requirements. It does retain a diversity of affordable rents, but we're moving the scale down, so it has a deeper, deeper affordability. And the 80% rent, rental tier, for one thing, has never been used. It, it, it competes with market rents because they are at or near market. 80% rents are, excuse me, at or near market rents in older projects. And they, and because you can't use them with Lytech funding, the developer's not interested in, in in having rents at that high level. So they just don't work. So council did want to go ahead and want, make one change to the onsite for-sale scheme. If somebody were to choose to do that, right now, most of the units would be priced at what we call low moderate pricing. It's a fairly low pricing. And so the proposal is to modify the unit price requirements to allow middle-income priced homes up to 120% AMI. So we're somebody to put for-sale units on-site. It's very, very rare. They would get a higher price for those units and they would help, those units would help us meet our middle-income goal. Um, yeah, go ahead Sloan. So council wanted us to kind of drop the, the scheme of onsite incentives and penalties. The biggest one is that right now, half of half of the required for-sale affordable units must be provided on-site. Or if they aren't, a developer can not do that if they pay a significantly more cash-in-loue. This was hopefully meant to be an incentive to get units on-site, but it has not been effective. So we're going to take that out. And in particular, that, that additional cash-in-loue, if you don't put the units on-site, really exceeds the threshold for what is feasible, a cash-in-loue for a development to pay. So it's, it's very counterproductive. And it may disincentivize for-sale development in general. So we're going to take out both the onsite requirement and the 50% increase in cash-in-loue if you don't do it. So you'll notice in the packet that we are proposing some, a change to the community benefit language. It's basically a cleanup to, to to follow that, that change that I just talked about. Because the community benefit ordinance basically says that for sale, half of the for-sale required for-sale units need to be provided on-site. And now that that's not in the IH code, we're just taking that out of the community benefit. Part of the ordinance, other than that, the community benefit won't change. It's still 11% more if you add additional height through community benefit ordinance. So then we have a bunch of other code updates. We're going to remove the cash-in-loue deferral. It's they, right now, single-family homes can defer payment of cash-in-loue for up to 10 years or at the time of first sale. It's not been a very efficient way to meet, to satisfy inclusionary housing. And not, it's not, not many people take advantage of it. But the few people that do, they, they essentially end up with a balloon payment that is problematic both for them and for us to collect. So just going to take that out. And then the land dedication, a little more complicated. There's a few things we would like to do with that. Basically, based on the experience we had with Diagonal Plaza, it taught us a few lessons. We've only ever had two land dedications in the history of the program, so live and learn with every, every project that does this. One would be to include city manager approval of the proposed location. Gives us a little, little more control over whether we can accept the land or not accept the land. This language about being under the same site review, it basically requires if, if land that is going to be dedicated is either within or adjacent to the market project, sometimes the land is somewhere else, elsewhere. In which case, it's not a problem. It won't be under the same site review. But like Diagonal Plaza, if it's in or adjacent to the market project, our site review code says that they have to go under the same site review. And so what we want is to make sure that the dedicated land piece has its, is calculated and is provided its own open space so that when that property is developed, it will have the necessary open space to meet its requirements.
Right, Mark?
Yeah, I just, I want to make sure this is okay to ask questions as we go along and answer.
Yep.
My question is, is I I'm, I concur with the idea that city manager would be able to approve a, a land dedication so that we don't end up with something that is undevelopable or highly undesirable or whatever. Does this allow for an Does this allow for, and is it through city manager discretion or somewhere else in the code? Uh, us to accept land dedication for a portion and cash and loo for another portion? Can, can it be part one thing and part another, or is it um uh, does it have to be all land dedication or all cash?
So um the way the code is written, it says that the the land is appraised. And if there's a gap between the value of the land and the amount of cash and loo that the market project owes, then that, that gap would be um provided for through cash and loo. So it depends on the appraised value of the land that is being dedicated. And as far as uh what we're going to do or the intent will be, right now, we have a process for uh for um for looking at um and reviewing a offsite location if somebody wants to put their units offsite. They basically need to submit a pre-app. Um, they have to answer some questions about the land, the appropriateness of the land for for housing in particular. And then that it, there is an administrative review of that, and then the the land, that that offsite location is either approved or denied. And so we would do the same thing with the land dedication. It's just that the code doesn't have it in there right now to to do that kind of review and approval of the location, so we wanna kind of tighten that up a little bit.
Great, thank you.
Long as we have a pause, anyone else have some questions at this moment? All right, um Michelle, please proceed.
Okay. So the affordable housing design, design review is is there to ensure that any project that has affordable units um in it does not have some type of review. There was a desire to make sure um a few years ago by planning board and council to make sure that we reviewed, uh for example, offsite projects or um, it was, it was particularly around um offsite development of affordable housing. Um, and so we had put the threshold for requiring the design review at five units, but that's probably too low. We probably don't wanna do a whole review just for five affordable units. I mean, for for just one affordable unit, so it's five total. So if we take it up to forty, that would mean forty and a minimum of ten um affordable units. This has never been used. Um, essentially, it's very hard to actually do an offsite project without uh going through site review. But his has happened and it wasn't um considered desirable. So we're just kind of changing the scale to a something that is probably more reasonable.
I'm sorry, can I just ask a clarifying?
Yeah, yeah.
About this um increase from five to forty. So that seems like a pretty big leap. Or um, and I'm curious a, how you got to forty or more units being the number which site review would be, would kick in for affordable housing projects. Um, and I I realize that there are other conditions that might lead to a site review, but like where did that number forty come from?
So actually, what I think is that five was a, a mistake. We meant five affordable units, but the way the code reads, it's just five market units, which is one affordable unit. So we, we definitely don't wanna do any kind of a, you know, site review type of review on a project that only has one affordable unit in it. But the forty just seemed like a more reasonable number, so that would be a project with ten ten affordable units in it. So we basically doubled it. I don't know, Sloan, do you wanna, do you wanna jump in on that?
No, sorry, I was trying to unmute myself. Um, I think we were also sort of trying to take direction from, like I said, the other initiatives and trying to make the the development of affordable housing as um less cumbersome and easier to develop. And so we were trying to come up with a reasonable amount of yes, there is a community benefit and us reviewing this for quality and for livability. Um, but it's not at a scale that it would, you know, disincentivize or, you know, just penalize the element of smaller developments, I guess.
Okay, I'm thinking of the development that's uh it's north uh off, sort of uh near the so- the soccer fields. And I don't know what it's called. It's very attractive, white, all white buildings and some town, I don't know which one it's called. Um, but I, and I don't know how many units are in there, but it strikes me as a relatively small. Um, I think it's an all affordable development, if I'm not mistaken. So
That's, yeah, that's Palo Parkway. Um, that was actually an annexation into site review, so that and that was, yeah, that one met the thresholds for a site review.
It met other thresholds.
Yeah.
Okay, so will you guys?
So, so partially, um Sarah, we came up with forty because this was really designed around um an offsite meeting your requirement offsite.
Yeah, yeah.
And if somebody's gonna do that, they're going to probably do a Lytech project and they need between forty and sixty units to do a Lytech project. So that was also where that sort of forty came in. Somebody's not going to probably put their units offsite with like ten units or fifteen units because they can't utilize the Lytech financing.
Okay, I appreciate that. Um Kurt has his hand up as well, Kurt.
Yeah, does this also apply then to a BHP project? So they're just building affordable housing, it's not associated with market rate project?
No, no, this would apply to funded projects like a BHP project. This is only if somebody has a inclusionary housing requirement on a market project.
Got it, thank you.
And they're either gonna put them onsite or offsite.
Right, yeah, thanks.
Uh, any other questions while we've taken this pause? Okay, Michelle, please, please plow ahead.
Okay, so then small projects with that less than five units, um it it it, that was a category created because of our kind of complex uh cash and loop scheme that we have right now. Um, and we just, we don't need that um for this cash and loo by square feet. We don't need the um small project category in the way it's defined, less than five units, the way it's defined there. Because we're doing square feet, not units. So it just is um will become redundant and we should take it out of the code. And then the housing inspection requirement, we require um projects that have affordable units onsite or offsite to um to to do housing inspections. Uh, th- these types of inspections are not done uh in the city like development review inspection um group. Uh, because basically they're inspecting to make sure that all of our contractual requirements are met. And so we do it right now and it's enabled through the regs, but we thought we would just sort of strengthen it by putting you know, a line item in the code that says that the housing inspection, inspections are required.
And Kurt has his hand up, Kurt.
Thanks, yeah, I actually have a question somewhat related to the previous one. You say in the original, uh in the memo, when you're talking about the cash and loo methodology, you say that rates will step down on the sliding scale for smaller projects. So which is sort of, it seems like it's a little bit related to number nine. Is that, that's still the plan? And if so, can you talk about the justification for that?
Sure, um there, there's sort of a distortion when you get down to very small amounts of square footage. Um, because you have this overlap between um what, how many square feet a single family home can have and then a multi-family? So think about like four thousand square feet. That could be one single family home, or it could be four thousand square foot homes, or it could be eight, five hundred square foot homes. They would all be assessed the same amount of cash and loo. So um at the highest level, where where we probably will set the cash and loo for all, as we've said, between forty and fifty dollars per square foot. That, that's a quite a large amount for a single family home to pay. So we've always had, and that's what number nine is about, we've always had sort of um we've always had a way to mitigate the amount of cash and loo for single family homes. It'll still be quite high, but you know, if if we left it, the, if we, if we didn't do this stepping down, you know, you could see a single family home being required to pay a quarter million dollars in cash and loo. So i- it's just sort of a distortion in the, in the numbers. Um, and so probably it'll be somewhere around eight to ten thousand square feet, where the cash and loo will be at one amount. And then at about eight to ten thousand square feet, something in that range, we're still kind of figuring it out with the help of the consultant. Um, the, the, the cash and loo um then is scaled down so that you have a reasonable amount for a reasonably sized, single family home. So this is the way that um this is kind of done with this methodology. Um, and KMA has um been working with me on, on how we're going to apply this in Boulder. And um does that answer the question? I don't know that I have more.
Yeah, it does answer the question and I will raise it again in discussion. Okay, yeah, that, that answers the question. Thank you.
Yeah.
Can I just jump in maybe, Kurt? Um, just to provide a little bit more context. So I think you're asking um, a little bit more around the, the rationale behind how it's gonna be structured. So the, the idea is that the typical home of, you know, like as Michelle said, eight hundreds, twelve hundred square feet, they would pay roughly the same amount of cash and loo that they pay now. Um, slightly smaller homes would pay less and anything larger would certainly pay more. Um, so that's really the, the approach that we're taking. Um, but as Michelle described, you know, it has to be some sort of a bell curve. And that's what we're, we're trying to figure out. Does that, does that help?
Yeah, I might have a different perspective on it, but yes.
Okay, Michelle, please go ahead.
Okay, go ahead, Sloan, you can move on. Oh, sorry. Relationship affordable units to the market units. So this uh it right now, so the, the whole scheme of IH is basically we get a subset of whatever a developer is developing. Whatever the market is developing, we get a subset of that. We don't drive what they are um doing. We just get a, a percentage of what they're doing. And so we get a proportional percent by unit type. So if they're doing half of the u- their units as duplexes and half of them as um condos, ha- the affordables will be half duplexes and half condos. Um, so if they're doing some single family homes, then the affordables would need to be single family homes, but there is a desire um in the city um not to continue to produce single family homes or encourage single family homes. And so what we're going to do is say, for, only for that type, for single family homes, you don't have to do like for like. You could do single family homes, but you could also provide um townhomes, and this would give a second option if you're doing single family homes.
Uh, Mark and then myself.
Hey, I'm, I'm suddenly very interested in this. Is what you're saying that that we is this for onsite or is this for offsite? Uh, for cash and loo contributions, I'm referring to item eleven here.
Yeah, so if they're providing units, which could be on or offsite, not cash and loo, cash and loo is different. Um, they have to do like for like typically. So if they've got um a bunch of rental apartments, that, then they put the affordable units onsite, they will be rental apartments. And if they're doing some townhomes and they put them offsite, then the offsite project needs to provide townhomes. Or at least equivalent, what we call equivalent community benefit. So, you know, we don't typically see developments of single family homes in Boulder, so that's one thing to keep in mind. This is pretty rare, very, very, very rare. Um, but we, but, but if somebody were to say put six single family homes in a project with maybe twenty townhomes, um, they could do all townhomes instead of the, one of the single family homes being affordable.
Okay. But just like go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Just like the, the revised ordinance proposes that we change to a per square foot cash and loo. And that affords us that, that affords the developer uh some fairer things and encourages, encourages the type of units we want. And it gives us flexibility. Is this, does this requirement of like for like type of units versus if we said, hey, we want you to do a X number of square feet to meet your onsite requirements? That um would that afford us greater flexibility if we were deficient in a particular market type? While, so developers uh developing uh efficiency living units and we see a great shortage in two bedroom units. Does this prohibit us from saying, hey, what we really want you to do is to do five two bedroom units uh instead of twelve uh ELUs? Um, but use the same square footage. It was like
Yeah, you know, the, the, the rationale behind inclusionary housing is that the market is producing what the community needs. They're doing a market studies and they're out there doing um the type of housing that community needs. And IH is simply a subset of what they produce. We don't change what they're gonna produce. Um, the only time, Mark, that, that that has happened, there have been a couple projects where they were very family oriented projects. Um, and they had a lot of two bedroom units. And I said, would you consider putting in um two, three bedroom units instead of, you know, trading off? Because, because, you know. Um, it, so a slight modification there, like the project I'm thinking of had like seventy units in it. And I, I asked for like two more three bedrooms. Um, and they were happy to do that and they did do that. But typically IH does not um dictate the type of unit to be provided. Um, it, it would be difficult because they, they decide to put the make the units affordable during site review and they already have their plans. They've got their floor plans and their unit scheme and all of that. And if we were to go in and say, well, we want um certain amount of square footage, that they're back to the drawing board and that could be very expensive for them. So I'm not sure how that, how well that would work for them. That would probably drive them more and more to cash and loo.
Great, that's a good answer. Thank you.
Yeah.
Laura?
Thank you. Uh, following up on that um uh line of questioning, if we were going to uh do this and say you can do townhomes instead of single family homes, how do we ensure some kind of equivalent, right? Like if it's three thousand square foot, single family homes that they're developing and the townhomes are one thousand square foot, that's obviously not an equivalent product. So is there any?
This was all in the regs, but there are size requirements for the units and they would apply in this case. So um, and I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me, but we have a maximum. Um, and I think for um a middle income priced for sale unit, I think the maximum size is sixteen hundred square feet, no matter what the um average size of the single family home or the townhomes are. Um, or even the condos if they're priced at middle income. So we typically, most types of units uh from two bedroom up to four bedroom, the, the size is eighty percent of the average market size up to a maximum, and the maximum is fourteen hundred for low mod units, sixteen hundred for middle income units. So there's sort of this range um that has been in the program since day one. Um, and it's just, the, the idea is to not get really large kind of luxury homes. So this is, the idea through the program is to get um reasonably sized affordable homes for the community.
Okay, so
Piggyback on that, I would say they have to provide the same number of bedrooms. So it might be a smaller unit, but it would still be a three bedroom townhome versus a three bedroom, single family.
Okay, so it sounds like that's kind of baked into the program that oftentimes these one for one units are smaller than the market rate units.
They're always allowed to be smaller except for very small units. Um, and again, I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me, but it's basically something like for very small units, it's like equal in size or six hundred square feet, whichever is larger, I believe.
Thank you.
So I have a statistics question. Uh, what percentage of permanently affordable developments are done offsite by anyone other than Offsite by anyone other than. Boulder Housing Partners.
Yeah, so yeah, and count those out. They're, they're not really subject to IH.
That's why I'm trying to understand. We've got this very complex set of regulations and I'm suddenly thinking like. How many developments does this actually impact?
I think there's been five in the twenty-three years of the program. Not many. It's very difficult to do them offsite. Um, you know, there was sort of some experimenting with that for, for a while. Um, and I haven't seen it for many, many years.
Okay, so that's helpful to put this into some context. Um, let me follow up with a couple of questions that bounce off of Laura's question and Mark's question. So. Uh, you just said that you have a, a one-to-one requirement on bedrooms. And yet number twelve is you're removing the requirement that middle income affordable units have at least one bedroom. So I'm curious, uh, i- i- and perhaps I misunderstood what you were saying to Laura before. But I, it sounded to me like an internal contradiction.
Right, so, so. Um, it is one-to-one for bedrooms. So if a project has all one bedroom units, all of the affordable units have to be one bedroom. But if a project has nothing but studios or even say half studios, then half of the affordables can be studios. In other words, zero bedroom. So to say that a middle income affordable unit has to have at least one bed- bedroom. It, it, it actually is a contradiction in the code because of this proportional requirement. If they are producing studios, we will take studios as the affordable units. Um, and so we're just taking out that. Contradiction in the code. Does that make sense?
I, I guess, are there often um? Uh, well. I, I guess, I, I mean, I have a question that has to do with the ELU issue. Cause what I, my. Reading of it, and again. Absolutely possible that I'm reading it incorrectly is that um. You're. I'm not sure it's creating, but it would allow for a hundred percent ELU. Projects. Is that correct? Uh, in general, that, 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 I'm sorry Sloan, maybe you come in to answer the question.
Yeah, so I think you're referring to the recent code changes um that Carl was working on. And so as part of that project, there was a proposal to remove the. Use review for an a hundred percent ELU project. So um those projects can occur now, they just go through a use review um. And then as part of that, either under the proposed or current. They could provide. The IH requirement onsite. And yes, twenty-five percent of. That project could be affordable ELUs.
I guess the, I guess the, I guess a concern I have, and I don't know if I'm asked if. Have exactly asked this as a question because it's a question really. Is that ELUs are, the comment is ELUs are actually the best return on investment for developers. Uh, but they don't necessarily meet the, the needs of the housing needs of. A pretty broad range of our community. They meet some housing needs, but not uh. Anyone with family, with fa- with children. Um, so I'm just sort of curious, I'm, I'm trying to understand the, what, what are you trying to incentivize? With number twelve?
We're, we're not trying to incentivize anything. We, it, it, right now, so. If you back up a couple of slides, don't, don't do that Sloan, but you'll remember, we said that all, all um for sale units provided on site. Which again is not going to be very many, so um. Will be priced at middle income. And yet we have this one little line in the code that says all middle income affordable units have to have one bedroom. So that. Creates a problem if, if a, if a for sale project of ELUs comes in, ELUs are typically rentals. Um, oh, you know, they're, they're, the ones I've seen have been rentals, but it is possible for ELUs to be for sale, I suppose. Um. Then we have a problem because the code says they all have to have one bedroom. So we're just sort of cleaning up this um. We're not trying to incentivize anything. We're just trying to stick with that proportional requirement um and this kind of.
Okay, I appreciate, I appreciate that clarification. I appreciate it. Okay, any other questions before um Michelle moves on? Um, okay, and Lisa, we got your text that you are um having internet trouble. If you have questions, feel free to text them to me and I'll ask them.
So rebuilt dwelling units um. It says basically that IH doesn't reply to units that are removed due to an act of nature or calamity, but there's no time limit on that. So something in, in theory, I've never seen it, but somebody could make the case, well, this was knocked down by. You know, a tornado a hundred years ago, so IH doesn't apply to me on my empty lot. Um, so we're just trying to, again, this is, this is cleanup we're in right now. Um, we just want to make sure that. Somebody isn't claiming an exemption from IH for something that happened long, long time ago. If somebody, if there's a fire, fire yesterday. Um, and they rebuild IH, it does not apply, they can rebuild. Um, and that has certainly happened, but it, it makes sense to put a time limit on it because otherwise it's just open ended. So, and then we just, we had an issue earlier this year where it was unclear who was going to make the determination whether a demolished home is safe and habitable. Because. Um, if a home that is demolished is not safe and have, have, if it's safe and habitable, in other words, that's a house that somebody's living in. And they, and it's demolished, they get an exemption from uh IH or IH can be waived if they rebuild in three years. That's the, that's what we have in the code right now. And if we do the next study, that piece of, the whole piece of the code would change. But it's what we have right now, so we're just cleaning that up for the time being while we still have to live with this. Um, but if a demolished home is not safe and ha- habitable, in other words, it's a, a, an old shed with no floor in it, they do not. Get to wave IH, it's con- considered a new, new construction. So again, this is just cleanup. Um, just making the determination of, of, of who it would be, the chief building official. Will make the determination whether the, the, the demolished home is safe and habitable. Um. And then conversion of rented ownership dwelling units. Um. So this had to do with that requirement that if you didn't put your, your for sale units on site, you had to pay more cash and Lou. And so um, this was basically a requirement that if you came in with a rental project. But then you converted it to homeownership within five years, you, you, you kind of. Um, it was a basically a workaround for that additional cash and Lou if it was a homeownership from day one. And now we won't have that in the code, so we don't need this either. Sorry, I know that's a little complicated, but um basically it's cleanup.
You're basically by changing the way cash and Lou is calculated. It removes a bunch of uh. Items that were. In the rec- in regulation and this is one of them.
Yeah, it just makes, it creates conflicts in the code, but both the way we're doing cash and Lou and, and removing that requirement for half of the units to be. For, for sale units to be prided on site. Um, that's what this was about. So. It won't be in there, so this would not make any sense in the code anymore. Okay, Sloan. So what we're doing, looking at the cash and Lou, that whole ratcheting down for, for very small. Um, amounts of square footage, um, we want to result in roughly equal cash and Lou revenues except. Where units are bigger. Um, so obviously we would like to see more cash and Lou out of that particular. Um. Change in the approach. Um. Cash and Lou can be leveraged, provide two to three rental units offsite. That's why council is particularly interested in making sure that cash and Lou is. Um, easy to apply and um a good, a good option for developers. Um. And making sure that the cash and Lou is, is viable, that's what this slide, slide is about. Um, it, it's a great option um for the city because we do get more units um elsewhere. Um, and so ca- council has decided that that's an outcome that they are comfortable with. Um, we, so essentially that money will go into something to, to a project like a BHP project. Where there's, we're meeting a, a wide range of needs. Um, senior housing or transitional housing or just regular affordable housing for working folks. Um, we also actually can distribute the housing um better. Through the cash and Lou mechanism because we're not tied to where new development is happening right now. So uh, an entity like BHP can go out and find a site uh. And we end up with a better distribu- distribution citywide.
I'm sorry, can I just ask a question, a quick question? If, if the money goes to BHP, when the money goes to BHP. Do they, do the um. Housing type. Or dwelling type come along with that money?
No, that gets completely severed. It goes into the Affordable Housing Fund, that money, the cash and Lou. It's generally mixed with other types of funding such as state and federal funds like Lytechs and state Lytechs and things like that, home funds. Um, those, those types of funds have certain requirements, so. Um, but yeah, it, it, it's just, it, it becomes its own project, which uh you guys often see. Uh. A- and make a determination whether that housing that BHP is constructing is what is right for the city.
So let me just follow up with another question that has to do, so. And does BHP build? Permanently affordable middle. It build for that middle income slice or only for below six, sixty percent and below?
BHP builds affordable rental housing, so at sixty percent and below. Yeah, it's rental at sixty percent below. They're not, they're not building for sale, middle income housing. Um, and there is no, you know, uh, one of the challenges with that type of housing is that there aren't. Type fun, like all the funds I just mentioned, none of those can be used for for sale middle income housing. So it's one of the challenges that we have. In trying to figure out how to meet that middle income goal.
Right, so what remains? It, it in. Our code or in our regulation that incentivizes? Middle income affordable. For sale. Housing.
Well, it's, it's certainly still an option that a developer, developer could choose. Um. And um we are allowing all of those um. Homeownership for sale housing. If they put it on site, then they will be able to price it at middle income pricing, so that is an incentive.
Okay.
But I, we wouldn't expect to see a lot of for sale, middle income housing through the IH program directly. Um. But there, we, we, we can use that cash and Lou to buy existing units and deed restrict them to be for sale, middle income units, and we're kind of. Uh, you know. Dipping our toe into that world to see how that works and whether that makes sense, whether that's a good, good investment of money, but we've bought some homes. With the cash and Lou, so it, it, we, the city's doing that, not BHP.
Okay, that's great. That's really great to hear and hopefully that'll be something that the city finds is an effective. Way to grow the pool. Um.
Might add a little bit. To that, Sarah, because this is your question that you, you wrote to us this morning. Um, so there is. In the scatter site acquisition, we've been purchasing a handful of uh middle, are basically homes on, on the market. Every year and we basically turn them around and deed restrict them and resell them. Um, to people eligible in the program. That's really been our most uh effective tool. But it's low and it's, it's actually quite time consuming and expensive. Um, so that's been the biggest challenge, but we also remember we just adopted the, the middle income down payment assistance pilot. We have our existing home to ownership um shared appreciation loan program, so um. Uh, we, and annexations. So we really turned annexations as a big tool. So to be able to deliver on those ownership opportunities. But it's the biggest, the most difficult nut for us to crack and we've talked about this, I think hopefully many times and you guys have heard this. We're always exploring new options, um, and we're definitely open to new ideas because it is so challenging.
Great, I appreciate that Jay, um Kurt and then Mark.
Yeah, thanks. Following up on this question about the middle income housing. I think that I read someplace in the memo that Lytech actually allows income averaging, right? So not everybody needs to be at sixty percent. They, you can have some at forty percent and some at eighty percent, for example. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. So, so a BHP project could do that, for example, to even provide some small number of units at a hundred or a hundred and twenty percent.
So Kurt, keep in mind, um, BHP does rentals. Um, so when we're talking about missing middle, we're really focused on ownership opportunities. Um, and BHP has been very clear from, eh, from their board uh that they, their, their wheelhouse is providing. For rentals for low and moderate income households. Um, it's not ownership. We've been trying to persuade them in that direction, but that's, but we haven't been effective.
Right, okay, good point. Yeah, thank you.
Uh, Mark.
Um. Uh, I'm gonna make a comment and you can write it if you want or you won't. I have this sense of whiplash uh based on what I thought was. A council, well, let me ask you this question. Did council way back when? In their um uh agenda setting and retreat. Give you the task of producing. Changes in the code that would create more for sale middle income houses.
Through, through the IH program, yes, that was what we were tasked with. Um, and it turns out that in order to do that. A- as you know, as we presented last time, um, what really would need to happen would be that the onsite requirement for those for sale middle income units would need to be roughly, would need to be feasible.
Right.
Right, and the cash and Lou is set uh at the top of the feasibility level, so you can't raise cash and Lou, so you'd have to lower. So right now, it costs about twice as much. To put the units on site as the cash and Lou, but the cash and Lou is as high as it really ought to go. So uh, um, that's why we came out with a fifteen percent requirement and council wasn't uh comfortable reducing the requirement.
And I would just add, Mark, you are absolutely correct and I think council even recognized that um. They were ju- reversing course from their initial direction to staff at the September seventh meeting, so. Your whiplash is, 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 yeah, recognized. Felt by us as well.
Yeah.
I, I think they had hoped for a, a less painful solution and then, you know, the, the, the solution really, you know. It's all a big balancing act and uh they weren't willing to. Comfortably going there.
Do you think, okay.
Sorry.
Oh, do you need, do you wanna call up me on this?
Well, I kinda wanted to follow up on, uh, cause I too sensed the. Whiplash. And um I'm curious if, as you all, the staff has thought about. Uh. The particular possible benefit of these changes that you're making absent the cash, the. Affordable for sale, middle income, which, and that. Possible benefit is some additional cash in Lou money. Um. Could that additional cash in Lou be directed towards? The, the middle income purchase uh program that Jay just described, like is there a way? To kind of bring us back a little bit into solving, a- addressing the issue we were trying to, they were trying to address. And maybe earmark. Uh, some portion of the funds to go into the cities, I'll call it a buyback program, although that's not a, an accurate description.
Yeah, I think that, that's a good, a good term for it though, a buyback program.
Well, we. Call it. We've just called it scatter site uh acquisition. I don't know if that's, it doesn't roll off the tongue.
No, but that's okay. Could it, could the additional funds or could some funds be earmarked for more scatter site, scatter site?
Theoretically, um, I mean, we try not to earmark because a lot of what we do is, is, to be perfectly honest, opportunistic. When we see an opportunity, we go after it. So does our, um, all of our housing partners. So we, we've tried to avoid saying. X dollars will go to this or X dollars will go to that. Um, but typically we have been setting aside every year. Uh, close to a million dollars uh for the scatter site acquisition and we've been, we're going after grant money, state grant money through proposition one, two, one, two, three. Um, and other state programs to try to um bolster that program, not just do it in Boulder, but actually do it uh countywide. Um, with our partners, so we'd be purchasing city of Boulder staff would be working to purchase homes. Um, countywide and making those deed restricted and making them available to middle income houses.
Okay, thank you. Um, I, I, you've given me I, an idea. Um, Mark, uh, you're next.
Right, so um. Getting back to the little whiplash. Getting back to the little whiplash thing, so I'm, I'm personally happy to see that council. Uh, this council has finally acknowledged the value of cash. And that, I, I feel like this is an acknowledgement that, that prior councils sometimes have not made. And so, and I think part of. Our issue, and I'll get to my question here in a second, is that we have set a goal of onsite units without. Without really clarifying what condition we're trying to create with onsite units, it is. Because, um, you know, unlike other cities, we don't have. Rough areas, bad neighborhoods, et cetera, and so, so this idea that, so I'm gonna ask you this question. How does, do you in the housing department? Have a, a really good understanding of the direction and goals we are trying to achieve. With onsite units rather than just onsite units in and of themselves being a goal. What conditions are we trying to achieve, or we finally said, yeah, we kind of thought we wanted onsite units, but I guess we really don't, so. Uh, uh, can you comment on that?
Well, the, the whole program was designed around the affordable housing being put on site. That's the way it was, uh, it was originally conceived, um, twenty-three years ago, so a long time ago. Cash and loo was just a, an, a, another option if they couldn't put the units on site, but because of the. Financial realities of, of, of construction and the cost of construction these days. You know, it's morphed into, into the, the way that program works now is that it mostly takes in cash and loo. That cash and loo is then put into projects elsewhere, so the program still produces a lot of units, just not in the way that you think it will. Just not onsite. Um, and so, again, that's what we presented to, to, to councils, if you, if, if onsite is important to you. Um, and for some reason, um. Well, I shouldn't say for some reason, so back in two thousand when the program was adopted, there was this idea that mixing income would really be beneficial to everybody. That has kind of fallen by the wayside, especially with the scale of projects that we have in Boulder. Like you have, um, neighborhoods where we have affordable housing and market housing, they don't have to be in the same building. And that's sort of what the thinking has come around to, sort of in general, around these programs. So, you know, council, uh, decided that they would be rather take the cash and new because it can be leveraged to produce more units. And that's the outcome that they're looking at. Answer your question, Mark?
A little, a little more flavor. So, um, I guess I would, I would think about it as onsite is the desired outcome. So the middle income strategy is really all about providing ownership opportunities. Um, onsite isn't, is an inclusionary housing outcome. And while inclusionary housing, um, is what we call the workforce and affordable housing, right, generates a lot of revenue. It's not the only source, like I was talking, describing earlier, so think about it as how do we get ownership opportunities? And it's just super challenging right now, if you consider how many ownership projects are actually getting built in the city of Boulder. And even across the country. So again, I, it reflects what's getting built in the community and I. You know, we have the same frustration. We're not getting the ownership outcomes because we don't have the right tools.
Yeah, okay, um, all right, do you foresee, when you look in your crystal ball? Uh, and I've been reading about a coming glut. Of, you know, here we have a housing crisis, and so what do we do? We build rentals and we're building rentals at a wild pace, and I say we. I'm talking about the US, Denver, et cetera, and I don't know if anyone read some of the articles about the number of rental units in Denver. Coming online, seventy thousand, I mean, giant numbers. And that, you know, some are predicting a crash or a, a, a big downturn in the rental market. Do you foresee a possible several years from now, uh, conversion? Of market rental units to ownership units? Uh, should the rental market take the plunge that some are predicting?
Yeah, I would say that's definitely a possible outcome. I mean, that's what happened when the switch from ownership to rental happened, a lot of. Uh, originally slated ownership projects like Peloton converted to rental. So it's only logical that if the mar- market were to shift back, that you might see the same thing in reverse.
Okay, thank you.
That's my crystal ball, but, yeah, I, I wouldn't rely on that.
All right, hold on, everyone, I was, where did, where did you all go? There you are, okay. Um, Michelle, you were not done with your, uh, presentation, so.
Yeah, just a couple more slides for us to take a look at. The next steps is that we will go tomorrow to the Housing Advisory Board. Um, and also give them the same update you're, we're giving to you tonight about what council has directed us to do and, and, you know. Going through in more detail of the co-changes. And then Oc- October nineteen, that would be first reading of the ordinance language to city council. And November second would be the public hearing and hopefully the adoption of the ordinance. And then, um, from November to January, we will need time to update the administrative regs. Um, and all of our online materials and things like that. So the ordinance would not be proposed to go into effect for ninety days after adoption. Um, and then next year, hopefully we would launch into a nexus study for that idea of, um. Having some affordable benefit from demolished, um. Homes and the homes that are demolished and rebuilt. Go ahead, Sloan. So this is the motion, we re- recommended adoption.
Hey, uh, before we turn to, uh, Lisa just showed up, Lisa, do you have some questions? No. George, do you have questions? You also showed up, okay, Laura. Okay, Laura, then Kurt, and if there are no more questions after the two of them, then we will go to a public comment.
Thank you, I just have one question, and I, I'm not trying to monkey wrench because I do think that. I appreciate that council asked staff to look into this. They got the answer back from staff about what it would take to create more middle income ownership opportunities onsite and what the trade offs were. And decided that it wasn't worth it for the, um. Uh, the trade off with the cash and loo versus, you know, how much we would have to decrease the requirement for onsite. I think that's an entirely appropriate, um, decision to make, given more information. But my question is, has any comparison been done or any information provided to city council about? You know, given that we still do want to create middle income homeownership opportunities through our, um, our programs, our various programs that we discussed. You know, our alternatives are, you know, the down payment assistance program, the scatter site acquisition program. How do those costs compare with what we were looking at with the onsite middle income incentives? Uh, does that question make sense? And I, I, I imagine the answer is that comparison hasn't been done yet. Uh, or maybe we don't need to do it. I'm gonna stop talking and let staff respond.
Well, you can't get two to three units offsite for for sale middle income units. It's probably is more of a one to one, wouldn't you say, Jay? For the money that.
So we, we did, yeah, that's Michelle's point, so, you know. You can only leverage that state and federal funding if it's a rental project using low income housing tax credits. We don't have the same tools for homeownership, right?
Understood, but, but we are still gonna put money into trying to create middle income homeownership opportunities. And so I guess my question is, do, do we have a good understanding of? You know, um, what it costs to do that, you know, for example, the scatter site acquisition. And, and use that as the comparison rather than the ownership to rental, because that's a different outcome, and maybe council is. Uh, is happy with saying, we're not gonna put as much into pursuing ownership, but if we're still gonna pursue ownership. It feels like we should be comparing ownership to ownership and the costs of this program versus this alternative versus. Ownership versus rental. Does that make sense?
Um, it does, yeah, and last year we did try to provide council. I think my board saw that we had a diagram showing concentric circles of what it costs for. A typical city subsidy for an ownership unit versus a rental unit. Um, and it's pretty dramatic. I mean, I think council does understand. Um, oh, yeah, there it is, so just give you, and these are very rough numbers based on, or, you know, this was, I think, certainly. Last summer. Um, but it just gives you a sense of how expensive new ownership construction is, that, that half a million to six hundred thousand. Whereas our typical subsidy for a rental project right now is between eighty and a hundred and ten thousand, so. I mean, so they, I think they understand the, the delta that we're dealing with. But again, you know, the, the goal of our whole affordable, um, um, our affordable. Uh, housing program is to provide a diversity of housing types. Um, so we'll still pursue ownership because that is a goal. But I think what council directed us was, you know, we still think the focus should be on low and moderate income rentals. Because that's where we see the, the real need.
Okay, gotcha. I'll, I'll just, just follow up by saying this, this is really helpful to have these numbers. This ownership acquisition number of a hundred to a hundred and ten thousand dollars, how does that compare with? What the developer has to put in to create a unit onsite? Is that this five hundred to six hundred thousand dollar number?
That's the five hundreds to six hundred thousand.
Okay, so the ownership acquisition, we still get more bang for the buck for the same money that would go into the cash and loo program and could be used for this ownership acquisition. Okay, that's the comparison I was looking for, thank you, now I understand.
And those numbers, um, I would add fifty percent to the owner, ownership acquisition right now. Cause they've gone up dramatically, just with the, in the past year.
Thank you.
What, 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 what do you mean by that?
Um, well, since we started doing this program over a year ago. Our, our average subsidy for a home that we're purchasing on the market was a hundred to a hundred and ten, and now we're finding it's, it's closer to a hundred and fifty, a hundred and sixty.
Is that because of the, um, mortgage rates?
Um, no, it has just more to do with the, the escalating housing costs in Boulder. Um, and also the cost to, uh, some of them have required rehabs. And, you know, just trying to find somebody to actually do the work has been challenging, so everything's just got, it's gotten more expensive.
Kurt, and if anyone has else has questions before we go to public comment, please.
I'm sorry, just, just on that, Jay, so you're saying, our back resolution clause has gone up fifty percent? What has new rental construction gone up by?
Yeah, I assume that's gone up as well, but I, I can't give you a good number on that. I can only tell you from experience in the past year on the acquisition.
Yeah, I got it, I, I just, it's. We're talking about the same proportion or not.
Well, thi- this is the city subsidy, so if rental, um, the subsidy. The, the amount of money required to produce a rental unit has gone up, that is often absorbed through the Lytechs, um, not through an increase in city subsidy.
George, did you wanna follow up with another question?
We're adding a lot of information here with just rough numbers, so I don't know that there is any worth going further.
Okay, um, Kurt.
Thanks, I have two questions related to annexation, which is. Uh, something that I brought up in a, a recent annexation. That we were considering, first of all, with the change to per square foot cash in lieu. With an annexation, you don't know how big a thing is going to be built, right? But we require the, the, um, the affordable housing payment at time of the annexation. So how will that work?
So, um, yeah, that's a good question. Annexations are really different than IH. Um, they're not IH, the IH rules don't apply. Um, and so annexations are negotiated, and so for anything over about five units, we, we, we do not allow cash in. We require affordable housing to come in through the annexation. Um, it's a very powerful tool that the city has. Um, and then that, um, for, it's only for very small projects, like let's say they have. They have, they can annex with a house, but they have the ability to add one more house. Usually we'll say it's two times the cash and loo when that house is added, not at the time of annexation, but what, at the time of construction. Then they will be assessed two times. We only use the cash and loo as a number, but it's not IH. It's just, um, to, to nail down a number for the amount that that house will have to pay when it's built. But for anything of any size, we're gonna require affordable units, um, no option for cash and loo.
Right, okay, so I, I think I was mistaken, cause I thought that they paid the cash and loo when the annexation happened, but that's not true. They, they pay it when they build.
Right, and so then you know what the size is, yeah.
Yeah, okay, and then a related question is, there's sort of this. Rule of thumb of a two X multiplier. That's just sort of tradition, is that right?
You know, where that came from, everything has an origin story, right? So the IH requirement being twenty-five percent. And, um, our, our rule of thumb in annexations, uh, formerly, I'm not sure that we'll see this going forward because it's high. Was to require fifty percent in an annexation, i.e. double. And so that's how we got double cash and loo. But I'm, uh, I don't know that we're gonna be able to see fifty percent in annexations in the future, so. You know. Uh, but that's where that number came from, that's how we ended up with double cash and loo, double, double the onsite requirement or double cash and loo.
Okay, thank you. I have one other question, which relates to sort of some of the details of Kaiser Marston, if that's right. Spelling or right, uh, pronunciation of the, the report, so it's a question about feasibility. As I understand it, they define feasible as meaning. The developer return is within. Two percent of the cost. But that cost includes a ten to twelve percent developer profit. Is that accurate? Okay, and then marginally feasible means that it's within two to seven percent. Of the cost. And so that means the developer profit, marginally feasible, would mean the developer profit basically would. Go down, right, if, if we're in that two to seven percent, so the developer profit would be more like. Five. To, three to five percent, and my question is, is a developer given risk and stuff? Is, is a developer gonna develop if their expected profit is three to five percent? I'm just, I'm, I'm partly, I'm trying to understand what the, the, the analysis that they made. But also to understand. If, if marginally feasible means that some of those projects are gonna happen, or it really means none of those projects are gonna happen?
Yeah, it means that, that they're, they're, they're basically on the, on the edge of not happening. Um, feasible means that all the investors, you know, so it's not just the developer, it's all of his finance people and. You know, there's a lot of people involved in, in a development, um, and it's a business and they have to make money or else why would they do it? So, you know, there's a margin, a, a feasibility margin that is very comfortable for them to say, yes, we, you know. Um, because there's a, a lot of things that could change, the cost could, could change over time, and so they have to make sure that they're i- in a. In a range of, of, of feasibility where they can absorb any problems with the project, for example. So they have a comfort level with a certain return on investment, and as that goes down, they get less and less comfortable. Going forward with the project because there, it's more risk, a lot more risk for them. So yes, when you get to the, into the marginally feasible, that's when they're really wondering if they should move forward with the project. If they can, you know, if they even can do it.
Yeah. Uh, okay, okay, I, I think that answered my question, thank you.
Thank you, Kurt, um, so we're gonna see if there are, uh. Let's see, first of all, staff, thank you very much. Vivian, can you, um, if anyone has plans to speak in the public, we're gonna go to public participation now, please raise your electronic hands. And then Vivian will call on you, um.
Yep, great, so each member of the public has three minutes to provide their comments, um, and we have making calls. So Devon will show the timer, please. Um, and we have making calls. So Devon will show the timer. Please go ahead, Megan.
Good evening, planning board. I went through this, uh, the, the hearing that council had on this in September seventh. And, um, I generally strongly support the staff recommendation. The reason I wanted to come tonight is to push back against the city council conclusion zone. That middle income housing, we should give up on that. And essentially they did that in their September seventh meeting because they, it's more expensive to develop middle income housing than it is permanently affordable housing. That is counterintuitive to a lot of people because you think of middle income. Housing doesn't have to be as inexpensive as affordable housing, so the subsidy is less. Um, three members of council were very disappointed, like the air was let out of their tires. Uh, when the majority said, well, if it's true that the same amount of money will get us twenty-five to thirty permanently affordable units, but only fifteen, uh, permanently affordable middle income units. Then let's just concentrate in the affordable units. And there's a time between now and the passage of the final ordinance at the first meeting in November. When planning board, housing advisory board and members of the public might push back on this. But as you can see, people, since I'm the only one speaking tonight. This is a, this is difficult stuff that is really left to you folks in, in whom the city has, has invested. It's confidence that you can see the whole picture and, and make the right decisions. But, um, after I've spoken, Michelle can correct any error that I'm, I'm stating. But our affordable housing program, which provides housing for people sixty percent and AMI and below. It's always given me the comfort that, well, gosh, we're meeting a, a lot of the needs of low and lower middle income people. But really the people that are served by permanently affordable housing are in a narrow band. The overwhelming number of them are between forty and sixty percent AMI. The people who work at the library, city staff, um, first responders and nurses and teachers. They don't qualify for our permanently affordable housing program. They make a little bit too much money to do that. And we're abandoning them. Uh, the middle income housing strategy called for thirty-five hundred units to be created by twenty thirty. And we have created only a handful in the last seven years. So I just, in your discussion, please think about whether you want to push back on what council does and kind of throwing middle income housing over the transom.
Thank you, Megan. Thank you very much. Um, is there anyone else? Vivian?
No, no other hands. That's it.
Okay, um, folks, do you want to take a five minute break and then we'll come back and have our discourse? Do I have a thumbs up on that? Thumbs up. Okay, we will be back at seven thirty-seven. If you can hear my voice, please come back to your computers. Excellent. Thank you, thank you. Okay, um, so I'm going to try a little experiment tonight. See if we can combine a lot of good ideas about how to process, how to, our process and see if we can do this. What I'd like to suggest is that we go around the horn once. And each person, when they're called on, raise whatever, um, topics or ideas they may have for either amendments or standalone, um, motions. Or if they just are going to support the suggested motion language. So that we can see if there's some areas of discussion that are common to, um, m- more than one of us. Um, and we can begin to, um, flesh some stuff out before. And if we know that there's, that the suggested motion language is fine by most people as a standalone, but there are other motion language ideas that are out there, we can go through that process. Um, Lisa.
No, I, I just want to talk. That's all.
Okay, okay. So Lisa's going to be the first around the horn.
I was like, no, I, I just. Um, yeah, I, I really appreciate what staff did here. I think given the direction council gave you, um, and, and the inherent challenges to this, I think you came up with overall some really good and exciting, um, ideas and if not solutions, I think definitely improvements. Um, I think this is just such a thorny problem. Um, I'm going to take a little time instead of kind of digging into that too much to say that as other members of planning board and, um, our sole speaker tonight said, and I, I don't think this is would necessarily within staff's purview, your responsibility because you take your direction from our elected officials. I, I'm just so disappointed that middle income housing didn't make it in here. Um, I think that there is a real need for permanently affordable, you know, lower income and some housing. And I also think that we actually do a pretty good job of providing that and, um, we're losing families. I mean, if you look at BVSD's numbers right now, we're looking at closing a lot of elementary schools and soon. Um, you know, I've, I talk about this often, but like a lot of my friends who grew up here are, are gone. I mean, they're, they're out. Um, and it's staff knows this better than anyone else. So I'm not lecturing to you. Um, I guess I'm lecturing council, um, and, and to the extent that this makes it into the minute, um, or, or that I go speak at council. But, um, you know, it, it used to be the lot of, of our city staff lived in the city of Boulder. And every year it's fewer and fewer and fewer. And, and then we complained about people commuting in. Um, I, I don't know what we expect. So, um, anyway, I, I, I don't want that to in any way reflect negatively on staff's hard work here. I, I think you've done, um, a lot of, a lot of creative and smart thinking and we'll probably have some feedback, other members of the, the board will, but, um, I, I just, I hope that it makes it into minutes and the record show, especially if, if other members of the board agree with me that it's just very, very disappointing that the same middle got cut. And I think it's a real lost opportunity and I hope we find other ways to address that. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Um, I'm, I'll just go around the horn. Kurt?
Thanks. Uh, yeah, I struggle with this question of the, the, the middle income housing because we certainly want more middle income residents to be able to live here. That's been a long time concern of mine. On the other hand, you know, there is the significant trade off in terms of the absolute number of low income, uh, lower income units that we can provide. So I'm not seeing a good answer to this, I guess. And based on information from the memo, it sounded like there are units that are available, at least rental units are available at around the eighty percent AMI that are, that are market rate, their market rate affordable, that at roughly the eighty percent, um, uh, AMI rate. And so to me, it seems like it's mostly maybe in the sixty to eighty percent. Uh, where we're missing out because if you're at sixty-one percent, then you can't, you can't, you don't qualify for a sixty percent unit, right? So I think that's part of what Mark was also talking about, that i- i- it's a definitely a concern and I know. I don't have a good solution for it. Um, but I, I, I certainly share the qualms that have been expressed. Two other things that I would like to raise, and one of these relates to a question that I asked. I have real concerns about giving a discount basically to people who are building large single family houses. The, Michelle mentioned the, the hypothetical of a four thousand square foot house. So four thousand square foot house is going to cost two to two and a half million, two to three million dollars, I guess, to actually construct. And so if we're worried about impoverishing owner debt because we're requiring a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar, um, cash in lieu payment. I think that that's misguided. I think that people building those kinds of houses absolutely can afford the, the cash in lieu, uh, at the full rate. And we should not be giving them a discount. Um, so that's one thing that I would like to get in here. The other, um, thing, and I raised this in my email, and I'm less, I guess, passionate about this. I'm certainly less passionate about this, but this, there's this provision nine thirteen nine, which as I understand it, allows someone to build a house and then defer cash in lieu on it. And first of all, it sounds like it's never been used. And so it's maybe just kind of cluttering up the code. It also seems like potentially you could own it as an LLC and then just keep transferring ownership of the LLC and basically never have to pay cash in lieu. So my inclination would be to delete that section of the code and just eliminate that possibility. So those are my two additional potential amendments.
Um, before staff responds to your, uh, Kurt, to your, because you keep moving on my screen, sorry. Um, uh, Kurt, are you, would your expectation be that you're going to propose these as amendments to this, the main motion? Or that you might do them as standalones?
Uh, I think they'd probably be most appropriate as amendments to main motion.
Okay. Um, okay. Um, Laura and then George and then Mark.
Thank you. Um, so eh, to try to be succinct. Thank you to staff for all of your work on this and for the excellent presentation. Um, I think I've seen the presentation three or four times now, either at planning board or at Haber at city council. Um, and I feel I have a fairly good grasp of it. Um, so I, I do support, I think the, um, language as proposed. And, uh, of course, willing to consider the amendments of my fellow planning board members regarding, uh, the comments about the um, abandoning the missing middle. I really don't, I don't see that that's what's happening here. I think that, um, this is a recognition that this particular tool of trying to encourage developers to build housing on site, ownership opportunities on site, isn't working for a variety of reasons. And as I understand it from listening to staff, we were never likely to get a lot of homeownership, middle income units out of this, no matter what change is made. Um, it, you know, we're just not building ownership units in the first place. And so, you know, given that this is the inclusionary housing units are a reflection of what's being built. If they're building rentals, we get rentals. It's only if they A, choose to build ownership units that we would even have the opportunity to build, um, to get in, uh, ownership units into the inclusionary housing program. And, um, the developer still has to have the option of cash in lieu. We cannot require them to do the onsite, uh, affordable units in their development. And so even by trying to incentivize, incentivize this with staff's original proposal, we were never likely to get very many of them. So I think I, I'm not, I don't think that this is a, uh, going to shift the needle one way or the other, uh, you know, and I agree with Lisa, we really need to look at other ways to try to get those middle income owner, homeownership opportunities. And I think we're going to get more bang for our buck if we just let the developers give us cash in lieu. And then we work on how do we develop, you know, how does the city act as the developer? How do we work with BHP? How do we work with housing for humanity or Habitat for Humanity? I'm very excited by some of the other things that we could be doing, like if the zoning for affordable housing, uh, passes and we are able to do more duplexes and triplexes in single family neighborhoods. Does that offer us some opportunities to do some of that scatter site acquisition? Turn them into affordable duplexes and triplexes, for example. Or, you know, Matt Applebaum and his wife Johnny donated their house to the city. Can we do more and, uh, figure out ways to incentivize people to donate housing that can then go into the inclusionary housing program? Can we work with Habitat for Humanity to fix these things up at a cheaper price? And all kinds of things that we could think about that I think are going to give us more bang for our buck than worrying about this provision in this ordinance about how we incentivize developers to do it onsite ownership when they're not building ownership anyway. So I, I'm comfortable. I, I don't feel like that's where my energy is, is trying to push back on this particular provision in this particular ordinance. But I definitely have energy to finding other solutions for the missing middle problem.
Hey, um, Michelle, you, you have your hand up. I think you wanted to respond.
Yeah, I just wanted to, um, maybe clarify Kurt, what you were talking about. I think we're on the same page. Um, we are proposing to eliminate the cash in lieu deferral.
That, that's what's being proposed. Is that what you wanted?
Uh, no, I was referring to section nine thirteen nine, which I believe is still in the modified, the, the, the amended code, the proposed amendments. Uh, you, you've taken out a bunch of stuff, but my understanding is it's still in there. May- maybe I'm misreading.
So there's two options in that code section. The first is to, if it's a single family home, you can deed restrict your single family home. They continue to live there without income qualifying. The second option is the deferral, which we're getting rid of.
Right. And it was the first one, the deed restricting your home option that I'm concerned about. I mean, if people actually want to do that, that's great. But I'm concerned that it could be misused. But I'm concerned that it could be misused to effectively permanently defer providing any kind of cash and lieu or any kind of providing any kind of affordable housing if it's owned as an LLC. And you just keep transferring the LLC. Basically, it never, it would never get, it would never turn into affordable housing and the city would never get the cash.
Well, I think we we can prevent that in the way we implement that piece of the ordinance. It's only the first owner that does not need to income qualify, whether that's a an individual or an LLC. If the home is transferred, the the deed restriction goes with it and any new people that live there have to income qualify. So it becomes a a permanently affordable home like anything else in the program.
Right. And my concern was if the the home is not transferred to a different owner, but the ownership of the LLC changes. It's a detail. We we probably shouldn't spend too much time on it. It's just a concern.
Well, I would say it's something that actually it's, if you think about it, people sell businesses all the time. And if the asset of the business happens to be a piece of real estate, and let's say you have two cash transactions, there is no lender that, and so the deed transfers with the LLC ownership. I I get where you're going with this, Kurt. I'm anyway, I I'm not trying to answer this for staff. I just, I understand your concern and I don't think it's small.
Do you want to talk about it now or do you want to get through?
Let's finish going around the horn and then come back. I think I said George was gonna be next.
I'll keep mine really quick. I I I kind of agree wholeheartedly with what Lisa said at the at the front. I also see Kurt point on this LLC thing too, so it's worth at least teasing it out. As far as trying to tack on, like to what Kurt said, tacking on like a fifty dollar cash and lieu per square foot newly developed home, I don't know that that would actually create the outcome that we would be looking for because I I could see I could see that inflating values of existing housing stock too, just by by creating an additional two hundred thousand dollar barrier for single families. So really need to consider sort of what the unintended consequence of something like might be. But anyways, those are my comments.
Thanks, George. Mark?
Yeah, I'm this just makes me kind of sad because I don't have any great ideas. Here we have excellent staff that's done excellent work, working with a very good consultant and has done what they can. And, you know, a majority on council saw things differently and and so, so I'm I'm sad that we don't have a way to advance with this ordinance change, our middle income ownership goals. At the same time, you know, I I am a a great proponent of the results of our cash and loop program. And I think that all the ordinance clean up and and modifications are are great. So I I guess I concur with Laura in the in the idea that you know, let's let's carry on and 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 figure out, be creative and in a different ordinance and a different code change, figure out something beyond our current middle income down payment assistance program, which does also doesn't be going much of anywhere. But anyway, I I overall, I'm in support of the ordinance and any possible modifications that we might come up with to avoid this LLC thing.
Okay, thank you. And my comments are, I completely agree with Lisa. And I'm going to propose a separate motion so that it doesn't get tangled up in the the main motion. Recommend to city council that explored, that explored the diversion of more cash and new funds for the purpose of additional scatter site acquisition in the city. And if that's a program that except in time, you know, this current moment costs approximately what the subsidies for rental development cost to the city. Then it seems to me like that's a useful that would be a good investment of some of the cash and lieu funds. And since since it's a program that we already know we have and we know how it works and we have this cash and lieu money, it's just a question. Again, it's a recommendation. So I'm going to make that recommendation after we vote on the main motion and the amendments, any amendments Kurt decides to support. I share, I will say to Kurt's two idea, two motion ideas. I I I both understand the impulse to not give big, those big houses, a new big houses, some sort of special deal, special deal. But I shared George's concern and he he's the go to guy on housing econo- real estate economics of the seven of us, that it could have some unintended consequences that have to do with increasing even more the cost of ha- of single family homes for sale in Boulder, especially since I just heard Michelle say that it's no longer the, it's now the policy of the city of Boulder that we don't want more single family homes, which I think I didn't realize that was our policy. And I think that we've just, if that is the road we're on, we've just made it made all the single family homes that remain in Boulder even more expensive, which will exacerbate the problem that Lisa has pointed to and that we all see with all of our friends who have children or grandchildren, as the case may be. In terms of the income qualifying, you know, putting it deed restricting your house while you still live in it. Seems like a a useful topic to bring up. But it also seems like something that we would just definitely be encouraging staff to explore and try to come up with ways to cir- to to eliminate that possibility rather than striking it from the program. Because the fact is that if you deed restrict your home while you live in it, the city has just added a deed restricted for sale home. And we need to add more deed restricted for sale homes. So I don't think you want to discourage that as a possibility. But you do want to discourage anyone who's trying to like game the system. So it Kurt, if you're gonna suggest a re- an amendment, I would suggest it be something around the lines of recommending that city council direct staff to explore that portion of your concerns. So Jay?
Are you all done going around?
Yes, we've gone around once.
Yeah, I just wanted to add a little bit more flavor to what Kurt's concerned about the the LLCs. So we have this challenge with our current affordable homeownership program as well as rental compliance program. We do have tools to basically enforce our covenants. So I understand the concern, but I would say that we are in a pretty good position to enforce it. And perhaps we could do it better, but I'm not sure it's going to be the big problem that you're you're foreseeing.
So how do folks feel if we go ahead and make the main motion and second it? And then see if there's discussion or amendments that people want to make to it. Okay, would someone like to make the main motion? I'll I'll just do it. Okay. The motion language, Planning Board recommends that city council adopt ordinance eight six zero one, amending chapter nine thirteen, inclusionary housing, section nine dash two dash fourteen, site review and section nine dash sixteen dash one, general definitions, BRC nineteen eighty one, modifying affordable housing requirements and incentives and setting forth related details. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Okay, Laura seconds it. Discussion or amendments? Kurt?
Yeah, I would like to suggest an amendment, or I would like, yeah, to move an amendment. Adding a provision that the cash and lieu rate not be reduced for single family houses.
Can I suggest a friendly amendment to that?
You can.
Could, what would it do? And I would, I'd be very interested in the opinions of other board members on this. If we added to what you just moved, single family houses over a certain size threshold, right? Like, I don't, I don't know that we want to be penalizing someone who decides to rebuild a twenty five hundred square foot house. But if somebody wants to build five thousand square feet or greater, then I'm less inclined. Like, as you said, that's already a two, two point five million dollar home. I'm not really worried about the impact of that on the general housing market.
Yeah, and if I can respond to that, certainly that is also my my primary concern, the the particularly large houses that I see going up around me that are just crazy expensive. Of course, with this proposed ordinance change, the cash and lieu will be based on square foot, right? So inherently, the cash and lieu would be higher for the larger houses. But sure, I would be fine also with some sort of a threshold.
I'm curious what George thinks of that. As Sarah pointed out, you're the person who understands these economics the best of all of us.
I mean, I haven't put too much thought against it, but I I mean, some threshold may make sense. I I but I don't know what that would be. It just seems kind of noodly on an already noodly subject. So that would be my general professional opinion.
Good, could we recommend that? I'm sorry.
Um, Mark just has his hand up and he was responding, I believe, to something you said. So if you don't mind, let's let Mark talk.
It, yeah, to to both. And and all I was going to ask is the specific line, words, section of the code where you would, would you be striking a sentence or words that provide a discount for single family homes? Can you tell me where where this is in the proposed ordinance?
My understanding is this is not in the ordinance. This is in the associated rules that the city manager would would promulgate. Is that, Michelle, is that correct or or Jay?
Yeah, that that that's correct.
So there's nothing really to point to?
So this would just be guidance saying, don't, don't discount it or create create, anyway, what it it would be up, still up to the city manager to draft this.
Yes, that's my understanding.
I'm sorry, Sloan, is this language that you're trying to capture what is being talked about? Or I I just don't know what this language is.
Yeah, this is, so this is the new ordinance language.
The new ordinance language, not including Kurt's suggestion?
No. So, yeah, I would just wanted to show that there's not really anything in here that points to how that would be scaled.
So in essence, it's the implementa- your implementation process when you get to implementation. I mean, this will be determined when you get to implementation.
Yeah, so so that that language that was just up, I didn't see anything in there about single family home carve out or something. It's still all per square foot. Is that correct?
Yes, but there's a sliding scale of between forty and fifty dollars a square foot, depending on the type of unit. And I think what staff had explained was that single family homes would qualify for the smaller end of that scale, the forty dollars per square foot, rather than the fifty dollars per square. Am I misunderstanding that? George is shaking his head, no.
How about we let Michelle answer the question, since she actually knows?
So one of, one of the goals of of transitioning to this different type of cash and lieu calculation would be to not, we, it is not a goal to increase cash and lieu from current levels because they are at the high end of feasibility. So we don't want to increase cash and lose significantly. Right now, all single family homes pay fifty two thousand dollars in cash and lieu because it's twelve hundred square feet and above. They all, no matter what size there, because nobody's building a twelve hundred square foot, single family home in Boulder. The average size is thirty five hundred square feet. So the intent is to keep the cash and lieu at fifty two thousand for a reasonably sized unit, say a fifteen hundred square foot unit or two thousand square foot unit. Again, we're sort of working this out right now. And then bring that cash and lieu up to the amount that we want to apply to all developments. And and so it's, it's, it's a sliding scale down to fifty two thousand so that we're, for at least some single family homes that are of a reasonable size, the cash and lieu is not increased. But because they all pay fifty two thousand now, anything over that target size of, let's say it's two thousand square feet, they're going to pay more than they pay now. So the goal that we want larger units to pay more will be met. But to bring that amount up to four, forty to fifty dollars per square foot, you know, you kind of have to you have to do a sliding scale to where you get up to that number. So that would be the way it would work. And so you would have small, up to a reasonable sized house would pay what they pay now, fifty two thousand or less, because right now, if it's less than twelve hundred square feet, they could do pay less. And then things over that reasonable size, again, I'm proposing something like fifteen hundred to two thousand square feet. The cash only starts to go up until it hits that target. And and again, I I think that the the consultant recommends that be at about eight thousand square feet to ten thousand square feet. You kind of ratchet it up. You hit your number and then everything bigger than that pays the set amount. So it it's, it's it's a kind of a, it is a best practice. The other communities that do apply cash and lieu by square foot do do this kind of sliding scale to get down to the smallest amount of square foot. So I I hope that, I hope that helps to clarify what what's really going on. So it's, it's not like you're giving a big break to larger homes. They will play plenty of cash and lieu. Like a four or five thousand square foot home will probably pay a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in cash and let's triple what they pay now.
So I'm, can I just, I'm gonna jump in here. I think Kurt, are you, you're there. Okay, you're moving. I thought maybe you had frozen. We don't have exact language from you, Kurt, but I'm, I am, I have to say that based on what Michelle just said, I would not support your amendment. I think, I think staff is 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 calc- is trying to calculate in meaningful way, in ways that will produce a meaningful financial outcome for cash and lieu. And, you know, the desire to use cash and lieu as a, as a, a way to prevent big houses may not be the right tool. So I'm just telling my, my vote would be a no.
A a quick addition, if you don't mind? The way that we have it set up right now, again, it's not set in stone. We're still, we're still like putting together how this implementation would work. When I looked at all of the single family homes that were built last year, based on the sliding scale, the revenues would be double what they are right now. So there, it's not like, yeah.
Okay, that's great. Thank you, Michelle. Kurt, do you, do you want to refine your language, revise your language? I mean, we don't, you don't have anything written down. I mean, we haven't seen anything written down, so we don't know exactly what your language is. But do you want, based on what you've heard from Michelle, what would, what is it that you'd like to do with regards to clarifying or withdrawing or rewriting your amendment?
I'm happy to write it down and send something. I do not want to revise it at this point. I think that somebody building a four thousand square foot house and is paying two and a half million, three million dollars just to construct the house, they can afford two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of cash and lieu. And I think it's completely appropriate to request that of them. They will they will have gardeners and cleaners and workers coming in all the time and put very significant burdens on our housing, on our lower income, middle income housing. And so I think that it's completely appropriate to demand higher cash and lieu from them. Just quickly responding to George, I think you're absolutely right. It'll drive up of the inclusionary housing program to some extent. of the inclusionary housing program, to some extent, it reduces the site cost, right? There's residual value calculations, but then to some extent, it also increases the price of units. But that's true of all of them. And if we're going to increase the price of a, a unit, I would rather be increasing the price of a four-million-dollar unit than a five-hundred-thousand-dollar unit.
Uh, my, my point was that, was that the unintended consequences of when you start layering on two-to-three-hundred-thousand dollars for a single-family home, it will create incentives. It will basically inflate the entire single-family home market. I, I, I don't, I don't know. Again, this is just a reaction to what you said. So I, 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 I just think we should be careful with that stuff because it might have an unintended consequence of, of raising the entire market because it's not two-to-three million dollars to build a four-thousand-square-foot house. It's at least a million to a million and a half of that is just to buy the land currently in Boulder. Um, and so the construction, and then you create other sort of like, okay, what does someone do? Does, does someone piecemeal, uh, uh, renovation that looks like a renovation, but is really just a reconstruction to avoid fees? At some point, that type of stuff happens. So I'm, I'm not, I'm not saying, I just, I'm not educated enough to say that that's a good idea without really understanding it more. It sounds like what Michelle said is, to a certain extent, what staff is already posing something like that. They just, they want to make sure that the thresholds make sense, um, which I think is kind of what I'm saying. And maybe even what you're saying, we're just coming at it from a different perspective. I just don't think we have a lot of information to, to make those specific recommendations.
So Kurt, if we could please, if we could ask you to write what you want us to vote on, because right now, we're talking about it. We're talking about it. So if you could write down what you'd like us to vote on?
Yeah, sounds good.
That would be great. And then, because we don't have a second yet.
So I, I will send something to Devon. Maybe we can go around to other people.
And, uh, George, you raised your hand.
Yeah, I, I had a question, and I should have brought this up earlier to staff relative, but it, it kind of precipitated this, this discussion kind of precipitated in my mind, which is we've got these, what seems like proposed, um, fees, cash and lieu fees. Um, and then, you know, I heard from Jay, you know, their costs are escalating at, at astronomical rates for different things. Um, has, has anyone taken a look at actually making sure that our cash and lieu fees keep up with escalation over the next, you know, few years? And is, is there an escalator that you guys looked at putting on top of this?
Uh, yeah, there, there is. Uh, sorry, just checking that my, um, it, it's a, it's a cost of construction index. There are two of them. Um, I would have to look up the exact name. But it would be, um, the, we would look at a average between these two. It's what the, the consultant recommended, would be an annual adjustment similar to what we do now, capped at five percent. Um, these two, um, cost of construction indexes average about four-point-six percent increase per year right now or over the last few years. That's the information that, um, the consultant gave us. Um, so, yeah, so, and that's why we would do then a feasibility study again in five years to make sure that we're tracking correctly.
Got it. Thank you. That, that answered my question. I, the only other follow-up is just, um, why cap it if cost of construction is going up and we're trying to build housing? Why, why, why not keep it along with whatever index to follow?
Well, it may also include, so what we've used in the past is a trailing average to, to take out the ups and downs of whatever method we're using to adjust the cash and lieu. Because big jumps, the construction projects are in multi-year development phase. And to, to escalate the cash and lose significantly between one year to another can really wreak havoc on things. And so we probably would bu-, also have a, a, a trailing average, um, calculation in there. It ju-, just because taking out the ups and downs i- is, you know, it kind of makes sense because these, um, developments look at a number early on. And if that number changes significantly in one year or two years, it can, it can be a big problem for them. So if we cap it, what will happen is in five years, if we're not keeping up, then we can decide to make an adjustment. But that way, there's some, um, the, the calculation that the development is using to determine how much their cash and loop can go up in a given year. They, they've got some way of, of building in that increase, um, like the maximum is, is five percent. They can build that in. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can I also editorialize slightly? Um, so if you look at the commercial linkage fee, there is no escalator, annual escalator for that. It's, it's thirty dollars per square foot. Um, so if you think about what we're imposing on housing and comparing that to commercial development, um, just food for thought.
Maybe it's time, maybe it's time to revisit the commercial linkage fee. Um, oh, God knows if anyone will build an office building anytime soon. Um, okay, Kurt's language is, is ready for us, and Devon's gonna put it on the, on the screen. Uh, can you make it a little bit bigger? Um, Evan, sorry. Okay, Kurt, do you want to make your motion, your amendment, please?
Yeah, I move that planning board recommend to city council that per square foot cash and lieu rates not be reduced to single-family houses.
Okay, do we have a second? No second has been.
Well, that's easy.
Yeah, that's easy. Um, Kurt, you, did you want, do you want to revise it in some way that might generate a?
Uh, no, if anybody else has a preferred amendment related to this, um, and wants to make it, I would potentially second that.
Okay, um, George, just so you know, your hand is up. Um, okay, uh, Kurt, you had a, so, uh, that Kurt's amendment fails because it did not get seconded. Um, Kurt, you did have, you had to discuss the second amendment that had to do with the income qualifying deed-restricted live-in owner question. Did you want to?
Yeah, I'm not going to make an, uh, an amendment on that, or propose an amendment on that. I think staff had good responses. They understand the concerns, and I think that they feel that they have a way to deal with that.
Okay, um, Laura?
So I have a question about that. Uh, uh, could we show the language again on that one? I think it was nine-dash something thirteen?
I think it was nine thirteen nine.
Nine thirteen nine.
Is what kind of reference?
I guess my question is, if we can pull it up, would it be useful to insert the single word occupant? The initial owner occupant doesn't have to meet the, um, uh, the income requirements. But then that would imply that any subsequent owner occupant, so if the, if the person living in the house changes, right? If the primary person owner occupant changes, such as with Kurt's concern of an LLC changing hands, um, would that, would that be helpful? Would that be a helpful clarification? So I guess I'm looking to staff to say, would inserting that word be helpful, or have you already got it covered? You don't need that.
Um, I think that would be hard to enforce because we don't know who lives in homes. Um, it really has to do with ownership. So, um, when the ownership changes, the new owner will have to income qualify. And, and one reason that this exists is because, um, a single-family home doesn't have a lot of options for how to meet IH. They don't owe a unit. They own, they, they can pay cash, but it, it, it is useful for us as a city to have a section, a, a second option for them. Um, they may not like it, they may not use it, but it is helpful for us to have more than one option in IH. Um, and so the other option is you could make your home affordable. Nobody's ever done it because it honestly doesn't probably make a lot of economic sense. And if you do that, then you don't have to in, income qualified to live there. I, it, it's an option, never been used. They typically always pay cash and lieu, but it, it, it is helpful from a legal perspective to have more than one option.
Okay, thank you. I withdraw my suggestion. Appreciate that.
Okay, uh, so I'm gonna reread the motion and then we'll vote on it. Uh, planning board recommends that city council adopt ordinance eight-six-zero-one, amending chapter nine thirteen, inclusionary housing, section nine dash two dash fourteen, site review and section nine dash sixteen-one, general definitions, BRC nineteen-eighty-one, modifying affordable housing requirements and incentives and setting forth related details. Kurt? I, we didn't hear you.
Yes.
Yes, okay, thank you. George?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
And Sarah is a yes, so it passes six-zero. Um, now I have a separate motion. I'm sorry, Kurt, what did you, your hand is up.
Sorry, go ahead. Uh, I, I, I'd like to say something very quickly at the end.
Okay, so I have a, a suggested separate motion, which Devon has, and Devon, if you could please put it up. Okay, so this is a suggested motion. I'm making a motion. Planning board, uh, recommends to city council that it explore diversion of more cash and lieu funds for the purpose of additional scatter site acquisition in the city. Is there a second? Laura seconded it?
Uh, I actually have a question for you, Sarah.
Yeah.
For clarification. Are you, I, I assume that the scatter site acquisition, I don't know if that is limited to middle-income housing or missing-middle housing? Can, can staff explain what kinds of housing are acquired? Because I think, Sarah, you're trying to target a particular type of housing with this.
I'm trying to get, I'm trying to get the middle-income housing topic back on the table.
Yes, so I'm just not sure if the scatter site acquisition is limited to that, or if it's like all kinds of housing, like is it apartment buildings, is it condos?
I'll let Jay answer. It could be condos, but I think I'll let Jay answer.
Yeah, it, it definitely could be condos. Um, but I would su- suggest, uh, adding middle-income ownership.
Okay.
To her, just to be super clear for council, because they may not know what scatter site acquisition is. But currently, the program is.
How could they not know?
We try.
All right, um, Mark, I'll come to you in a second. I'm gonna revise the language so that it reflects Jay's suggestion, and I'll come to you. So the mo-, it would read, motion recommending to city council that explore diversion of more cash and lieu funds for the purpose of additional middle-income scatter site, scatter site, excuse my language, scatter site acquisition in the city. Um, middle-income housing.
Ownership, I think, I think is the word, ownership.
Middle-income ownership. Uh, do I need the word opportunities in there, Jay, or is that fine? That's fine. Okay. Uh, uh, before I move on, um, uh, I will need a second for us to have a discussion. So, um, Mark, let me remake the motion, and then we'll see if there's a second. If there's not, then there's no point in discussing.
Just, this would be a time, I, I just have a, I have a suggested wording change that before you have a second, it would be easier to accommodate than after you have a second. And that is, uh, I believe it should say, motion recommending to city council that they direct the city manager to explore. Right, city council theoretically doesn't direct, doesn't, doesn't A, explore anything, and B, can't really direct Jay or any, any staff to do anything other than the city manager.
Okay, motion recommending to city council that it direct, uh, city manager to explore diversion of more cash and lieu funds for the purpose of, does that, uh, properly capture your, your?
Thank you. Yes, yeah. But I, I don't know if Jay or anyone wants to, or Michelle wants to comment what I just said, but.
Jay has his hand up.
Oh, I meant to put that down. No, I think it's fine. That was a good clarification.
Okay, excellent. Any other clarifications before I caught, read it again and ask for a second? See if I get a second. Okay, uh, planning board, uh, recommends to city council that it direct the city manager to explore diversion of more cash and lieu funds for the purpose of additional middle-income ownership, scatter site acquisition in the city. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Uh, Mark is a second. Is there any discussion of this? Laura?
So I didn't know whether to do this after the second or before, but I think I would be more comfortable with this motion if it is broader. Um, because this implies that we know that the best way to get more middle-income ownership opportunities is scatter site acquisition. And I would love to see a broader, uh, exploration of all the possible ways that we could get middle-income ownership, including scatter site acquisition. So I would recommend a, a wording change, a friendly wording change if appropriate, if Sarah would consider it, and Mark as the second to say, uh, direct the city manager to explore, um, uh, additional opportunities to add middle-income ownership tools such as additional cash and lieu for scatter site acquisition in the city, or something to that effect. I just would like to make it broader because I'm not a hundred percent sure that this is absolutely the best way to do this. I just would like to see it more further explored.
Um, okay, may I suggest? Yeah, and, well, and I don't know if you entertain it at all, but I think you could keep it maybe exactly as written. Um, but then add a comma after ownership and say, like, including potentially or something, or including scatter site acquisition. That way you kind of keep all the wording ahead fine. So motion recommended to city council that it direct city manager to deliver diversion of more C L funds for the purpose of additional medical income, uh, homeownership, should it be homeownership? Middle-income ownership, including potentially additional scatter site as acquisition in the city.
A- and I appreciate that, Lisa. I, I think that that still focuses on how do we direct the cash and lieu money? And I think that there might be other options, such as encouraging home donation or encouraging, uh, duplexes and triplexes that are deed-restricted that don't necessarily stick to diversion of cash and lieu funds, which is why I suggested changing the wording the way that I did. But I completely appreciate what you're trying to do to keep it simple.
So I would say, um, uh, I actually don't want to change the language, uh, because there we have the ca-, the cash and lieu can be redirected and, or, or not redirected, but divided up. And I would, given that the city council wanted to, the staff to pursue middle-income ownership opportunities and then made a complete U-turn and did away with whatever was in, and I, I understand why they did. But we, we do know that the, we know that this particular tool can work, and we know that there's cash and loop coming in. And, um, I might, we can maybe have a second mo-, a, a second separate motion that speaks specifically to exploring the wide range. But I'd very much like to stick with this specific, uh, recommendation. And I'm happy to vote for a second motion that is broader, if you don't mind. Okay, Lisa, you still have your hand up? Do, do you wanna? Okay, all right, so, um, I will reread this motion. We've had a second, um, and then we can vote on it. Uh, uh, planning board recommends to city council that it direct the city manager to explore diversion of more cash and lieu funds for the purpose of additional middle-income ownership through, should be through scatter site, scatter site acquisition in the city. Um, Kurt?
No.
All right, uh, Lisa?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Sarah is a yes, so it passes five-one. Um, Lisa, Laura, did you want to make a separate motion that does create the recommendation for expanded, uh, exploration, or exploration of expanded opportunities?
Uh, let me, is, does anybody else have something that they want to recommend?
Uh, oh, not on this. No, no, not on that one. I have a different motion.
Um, go ahead with your motion, George. I think mine would be separate, so.
Sure, I, 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 I pasted it into the chat. Someone can put it up.
Devon and his magic cut and paste.
So, um, I, I thought what Jay brought up was actually really, really interesting um, that our commercial linkage fee does not have a, um, an escalator on it. And I don't think that makes any sense, especially with what we just talked about. Um, so my motion would be to direct the city manager to have staff explore an escalation metric on the commercial linkage fee consistent with the escalation metric that we just, that we, that's in this ordinance, um, to match it up. Um, to match it up, uh, to keep pace with cost of development and construction for inclusionary housing.
I'm a total second on that.
It it seems like, it, to me, it just seems like an oversight, um, with with what might be out there today. Um, it obviously doesn't match up with what we just talked about.
Uh, Kurt, you have your hand up. Did you want to say something?
Yeah, I just had a question. When you say consistent with the escalation metric used within the inclusionary housing ordinance. Are you implying that they, that it necessarily be the same escalation?
No, that's a good, that's a good nuance. No, that's why I meant, I meant consistent because I think that. Um, there there might be some different metrics used for commercial construction and residential construction. But we all know that costs are escalating across the board. Um, so there may be, you know, RS means might be different for commercial construction. Uh, than than residential, um, but it should be consistent in the way that we think about it. Because ultimately, what we're trying to achieve, I think, is um, to keep pace. So that uh, these programs are funded adequately as as costs escalate.
So I would support this. It would just be nice to have some clarification of that because. It doesn't read completely that way to me.
Yeah, I'm totally open to that because that's, that's what's intended. I just don't know how to word it better.
So, w- would it just simply say, uh, after the commercial linkage fee? That is, uh. Tied to the escalation of construction costs. Infl- so rather than like a C I P or or, you know, uh, C I P U or these other things. Just, we we let them figure out the appropriate construction cost metric to tie it to. But it or index, maybe the other word would be index to, uh, a.
Yeah, it was just, I I hear what you're saying. It just, it's kind of based on what Michelle said. It's so nuanced in their language. Relative to this averaging and capping and different things that they're using. I just, I want to make sure it's. That's why I use consistent, whether it's something, it's just something similar, maybe it's similar.
What about modeled upon? That is modeled upon the escalation metric?
Yeah.
Uh, Laura, you have your hand up and I don't know whether you were responding to.
It was for that.
Okay, all right, so, um, where, uh, George, can you make sure that Devon and you are making the? Change in the right place?
So motion recommending that city council direct, uh, city manager to explore the addition of an escalation metric. On the commercial linkage fee, uh, modeled upon. The escalation metric used within the inclusion housing ordinance.
So you have escal- you're, yeah.
That, sorry, yeah.
Yeah, just sorry to interrupt you.
And then you can lose you after escalation metric. Uh. Get rid of that is consistent with the escalation metric.
Yeah.
Yeah, from, nope, yeah, yeah. Okay, so, uh, George, you want to, wait, I wanted to, George read it and I seconded it.
Can I just suggest, I'm sorry, just to make the language very clean. I would just end the sentence at development and construction, period, because I think that saying for inclusionary housing, it gets confusing.
Sure, it's fine. Anyone have any other suggestions? Otherwise, I'll read it off and we can.
Okay, uh, no hands at this point, so George, please reread it.
Yeah, uh, motion recommending the city council direct. The city manager to explore the addition of an escalation metric on the commercial linkage fee modeled upon the escalation metric used within the. Inclusionary housing ordinance to keep pace with costs of development and construction.
All right, Kurt?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
And Sarah's a yes, it passes six zero. All right, Laura, you're up. If you, if you do have language for another motion.
No, I think I'm good. I think staff have heard that we're interested in exploring additional ways to get middle income ownership opportunities. I also want to put in a plug for, uh, I've said this before, just really briefly. Financial literacy, you know, homeownership is not the only path to generational wealth and financial stability. But most people uh, don't get financial literacy if they don't get it from their family of origin or the people they hang out with. It's something that I feel like the city should provide education on, so I'm gonna put in a plug for, for that as well. I'm gonna say that a lot. I don't know where it goes. I'm not gonna make a motion about it, but I really feel like the city should pay attention to that because I think a lot of people are looking to their housing. To provide their financial stability. It is not the only or necessarily even the best way to do that. And there are other reasons to want to own a home, but. Financial literacy. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, all right, so we have completed our public hearing item. Uh, wait, Kurt has his hand up. He wants to say, I'm, I'm sorry, Kurt, I had forgotten.
Oh, that's okay. I just wanted to quickly say that to me, the biggest part of this ordinance change is. Moving to a per square foot cash and loo, and I just really appreciate that. I think that's a great change and I really appreciate that. That staff is moving forward on that, so thank you.
Okay, um, staff, thank you so much. Um, please go forth and live your lives and, uh, at least for another week. Um, meanwhile, we will go to matters from the the planning director, city attorney and the planning board. By Jay and Michelle and.
I want to thank the HHS staff for all their time this evening and of course, all the hard work, which is really. Uh, the city as an organization's work and we, we appreciate the partnership with them and lots of interaction between our two teams. Uh, really appreciate them and, uh, the work that we do together to complement things through zoning and housing policy. So it's a very interconnected, uh, element, so thank you, Michelle, Jay, Sloan. Sorry if I missed somebody there. Thank you, everybody.
All right, see you later. All right, um, matters from planning, matters from planning director.
Yeah, um, you know, I'm getting excited about the retreat that's coming up. I think everybody is planning to be there. Uh, we are working, uh, to get that finalized in terms of, uh, logistics and agenda and all that stuff with the. The input that's been, uh, provided by the subcommittee working on that. Um, we continue to work, uh, now with recognition that the end of the year is kind of in our sights and so. Uh, the many, many, many work program items that we've got, uh, set for ourselves, uh, just in terms of. Um. Uh, operation excellence and. You know, many, many priorities are, are all kind of very much in our, uh, sights, so we continue to move forward on those. Uh, appreciate as always all the hard work and dedication of you all and. Uh, that really concludes my comments for tonight. Happy to answer any questions.
Anyone have questions for Brad? Okay, uh, anyone on planning board have, um, comments or questions or topics they would like to raise?
Real quick, I don't know if Devon or Laurel have anything there.
Nothing for me. Thank you, though.
Nothing for me either.
Okay, and Kurt has his hand up.
Yeah, just quickly, as the liaison for the Boulder Junction Phase Two, I just wanted to report back that. City council passed the changes to Boulder Junction Phase Two. They did not accept our recommendation regarding neighborhood, the change to neighborhood T O D, but otherwise they passed it, so that's great.
Okay, thank you, Kurt. Mark?
Um, just as a bit of a debrief, I thought that, uh, the the second motion that we passed. Six zero was in a super appropriate, separate motion. And and I just thought that was really smooth and great and I, uh, appreciate us handling that in that manner. And I thought it worked really well, so kudos to us for that. For our chair.
Hey, um, uh, anything in terms of, uh, calendar check, Devon? Have people, people, if they're not gonna be, if they're not gonna be able to attend a meeting to let, let him know, let Devon know?
All right, does anybody know, is M L okay? Do we know her presence, her absence is felt?
I sent her an email and did not hear back from her, so.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, uh, I am, unless someone raises their hand right now. I am going to adjourn this meeting at eight thirty-nine and congratulate ourselves for finishing in a timely manner.
Thank you all.
All right, good night, all.
Have a good night, guys.
Bye.